Okay, we are now streaming to YouTube, so I will hand the meeting off the bill.
Okay. Let's call this meeting of the East Franklinton Review Board to order. Belkus, call the roll, please.
Yes, Dr. Boss?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Fergus?
Here.
Mr. Manfred?
Present.
Mr. Overly? Okay, Mr. Semanski?
Present.
And Mr. Way?
Present.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So everybody had an opportunity to review the minutes from our last meeting, and if so, are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? If not, entertain a motion at this time.
Motion to approve?
Second, Mr. Way.
Yeah.
Okay, call the roll, please.
Okay, Dr. Boss?
Approve.
Mr. Fergus?
Approve.
Mr. Manfred?
Approve.
Mr. Semanski?
Approve.
And Mr. Way?
Approve.
Okay, thank you. Moving on, old business, applications for certificate of approval. Our first application is EF 1812 003, address 798385 McDowell Street. The property owner is the City of Columbus, and the applicant is Homeport and Columbus Design LLC. Belkus, staff report, please.
Yes, yes. So the Columbus Housing Partnership, or Homeport, is proposing to construct a four-story multifamily development at the corner of State and McDowell Streets within the West Broad Street sub-district. The units will be intended for families earning 80% of the area median income or below, and the project is anticipated to be submitted to the Ohio Housing Finance Agency to receive a special allocation of tax credits as a part of the Fact 50 program. The development includes a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units for a total of 50 units and a total of 64 parking spaces, four onsite spaces, and 60 within the Gravity 2 parking garage. The project is being developed in conjunction with the approved Gravity 2 development and will utilize the parking and provided site amenities. In February 2019, the board approved the demolition of the site's existing church on the following conditions, and that's that tax credits or other public financing be awarded to the project for construction of multifamily housing to provide affordable housing, two documentation of the structure to be coordinated with the Historic Preservation Office, and three, board review and approval of the elevations, materials, landscaping, and lighting. And then also, in February of 2019, the board approved the construction of the new multifamily apartment building on the following conditions, and that's board review and approval of the elevations, materials, landscaping, and lighting, and also to provide 60 parking spaces through a shared parking arrangement. So today, the applicant is requesting approval for the elevations, materials, lighting, and landscaping of the proposed building. The applicant will return to the board at a later date for the approval of the graphics. So at the June 2020 meeting, the board provided the following feedback for the applicant and for the elevations, and that's that the brick material on the east elevation be limited to the two end tabs, and for the first or second story of the middle section of the building, that the entrance and community spaces be oriented near the corner of State and McDowell Streets, and for there to be less wall space on the east and south elevations, potentially through increasing the window size or adding more windows, and to bring the darker panel material further down the center portion of the east elevation. So in response to the board's feedback, the applicant has updated the east elevation by bringing down the fiber cement siding along the center portion and reduced the amount of brick materials and increased the number of and size of the windows on all elevations, and oriented the main entrance covered terrace and the community space to the corner of McDowell and State Streets. And the middle includes the site plan, elevation, rendering floor plans, and photos of the existing site. So Jaclyn, if you could go to their drawing sheet, and then we'll go ahead and start with the, yeah, so here, oh, if you go to the first page. Yeah, so here, this is the corner of State and McDowell. So you'll see that corner now includes the covered terrace and that'll house the main entrance as well. And then if you run your eye to the right, that's going along McDowell Street, you'll see how the brick was remained on the two end pieces, but how that darker panel has come down on the side in the middle. And then if you can go to the next page. So here, you just have the different floor plans. Next page. And then here is the site plan. Next page. Here you have the landscaping plan, so you'll see the trees and the shrubbery there. Next page. So this is the site as it looks today. Next page. Okay, so here, we have the east and south elevations. So again, you'll see, you know, how the materiality was updated. You'll also see how the windows were updated along these elevations as well with regards to the space that they take up, their sizing, and the number of windows. And then you'll also see how that entrance and the community space shifted to the corner there. And then if you could go to the next page. And so here are the west and north elevations. And so if you go back to that first page, Jaclyn. So after staff review, the proposal is consistent with the East Franklinton period community district plan, and staff does recommend approval. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Belkus. Any questions for Belkus? Hearing none. Who do we have representing the applicant here? Anyone?
Yes, we're here.
Design company.
Okay, can you each state your name, please? For the record.
So I'm Leah Evans with Homeport.
And?
I'm Carrick Sherrill with Columbus Design Company.
Okay, and I'm going to administer an oath now. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge and belief?
I do.
Okay, floor is yours. Go ahead.
So I'm going to pass it to Carrick, just to recap where we are on our timing of delivery of this building. We appreciate this opportunity to talk more about how the building will actually become a part of the community and the neighborhood. We're hopeful that after this, we'll dig in and continue our work on the plans for the building. We will be finalizing and moving forward with those plans for the rest of the summer, submitting documentation to the Ohio Housing Finance Agency probably sometime in September, and we will look to be able to actually start on this project next spring. So there'll again be some time before you start to see activity on the site, but just wanted to share that development timeline. And again, welcome any questions you have about our plans for the development of the site. And Carrick, what's changed since last month?
Well, Belkus actually did a great job of explaining the changes between last month and this month. I think that one of the primary concerns that I heard the last time that we got together was the transparency and the perceived activity at the corner of State and McDowell. And so we addressed that by shifting the program spaces around a little bit in order to have the community space and the entrance to the building a little bit closer to the corner, with the community space right on the corner to be able to have that activity. I think that that really actually helps also the potential for community engagement in that community space because it allows for some direct access for a different, you know, potential activities without accessing the other parts of the building. We've increased the window sizes, primarily the style of the building has stayed the same. I feel that similar to last month, that it's finding a middle ground between what's existing in Franklinton around this area and in what's coming up with the Gravity 2 project and the juxtaposition of the styles of the existing warehouses and, you know, low-rise masonry residential buildings, and, you know, then obviously the more modern designs of the Gravity projects. I believe other than that, that's about all I have.
Okay, thank you. Board members, any questions for the applicant? Discussion?
This is Kim Way. I have a question. Comment and question. So great, great improvements in the project. I think the changes that you've made have really helped out a lot. I just have one small comment about the landscape. And you've created now this great urban corner, and you just mentioned about what community can come together. I would really prefer to see that corner basically thought of as like a plaza. So I would not put any landscape there. I would let the building come down and either be sidewalk material or some special, maybe there's some special paving there that's different than the sidewalk so that, you know, people could actually walk up to the railing and say hello to somebody or talk to them. I think the landscape kind of is a little bit of a, like, you gotta stay away. So this is, I keep mentioning this most of our meetings, that that corner to me is a very important corner in East Franklinton, and it needs to be an urban corner. And I think the landscape makes it look a little bit more suburban and residential. So I would advocate, in this case, of removing some landscape, which is really unlike most comments that I have. And the other board members can chime into that, but that's just my reaction. I love that space that you've created there, and the railing celebrates it, and I think the landscape is not helping it. I think that needs to be a paved space.
Carrick, this is TJ. I have a question for you to follow up on Kim's point. Looks like, obviously, you've got three steps up to the community space. So there's an elevation or grade change there between that floor and the sidewalk. And it also looks like you don't have the same amount of space on the east side as you do on the south side. But would it be, I think to Kim's point, would it be possible to make that stair, instead of it being a three- or four-foot wide staircase, bring those stairs all the way across? I guess my question is, are those doors, are those four separate doors all out to that plaza area? And would you possibly be open to enlarging the plaza to come all the way out to the sidewalk and have the railings kind of on the sidewalk and enlarge that plaza to make it feel like you're standing right on the corner of the block? Is that something that would be, Kim, kind of to your point?
Yeah, that would be a way to deal with it. It could also just be, if you had like a very wide sill all the way around it that connected stair to stair and treat it as like a bench, like it could be a concrete bench. And so if you could come up and sit on that corner, I think that would be another way to do it.
This is Ryan, and the one question that I'll add, Carrick, and you're going to be much smarter on this than I, I mean, but I just, because I've been hit with this many times from an ADA accessibility and such with two sets of stairs, and now we move that common area to the corner. Do you have to provide ADA accessibility, and does that affect with those grade changes would be my question for you?
So, yeah, let me respond to a lot of those questions and comments. And they all really do a very good job of tying into each other. So the floor plate of the common, I'm sorry, the community room, which is at the corner, is about two feet above grade. So, and unfortunately, it needs to be that way because I need to have accessibility for the whole building. So if you'll notice, if you go to sheet A21 and look at the rendering, the entrance rendering, you'll see there that you enter the building into the lobby at grade with no stairs. So I've really been trying to do a balancing act between accessibility to the building and not only on this side, but as well as the parking side of the building. And then getting folks up in an elevator, the 24 inches from what would, I'm calling the lobby level, basically, to the first floor level, which is two feet up. So, and all of that long story leads to the answers to some of the questions that the community space floor level, it can't really spill out into the sidewalk at the same level. There'd still be some kind of wall. Now whether that becomes a seat wall or whether that's softened by the landscape that I'm showing, I think that's certainly open for discussion. The developer owner might have some thoughts about whether they want to encourage people to sit on their building. So the landscaping might either deter that or encourage it, but I'll certainly defer to the commission and the owner's thoughts on how to address the grade level change there. Did that answer all the questions?
I guess my last one, I'm looking at sheet, I guess, A01, but there's a couple of those, I believe. The site, basically the site plan, and you have the property line as not being far off of that patio. So you're showing in your rendering and on the site plan grass to the sidewalk. Is that, I guess, that might be what's misleading to us. Is that going to be grass and hedge? Or is that going to just be eight-foot sidewalk, which is the more city standard moving forward, or is... Your property line basically is shown as coming right to the bottom of that bottom stair, correct?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Oh, you're absolutely right. And I honestly don't know if I have an answer to that question. I think the city engineering staff will determine the width of that sidewalk. That sidewalk, in my observation of the site, is fairly new with the curb ramps and everything. So our building appears to be far enough away from it that we could leave it during construction without disturbing it, which would, you know, be our preference, you know, to help control the cost of construction.
I'm not advocating any of that change either.
Yeah, so I think it's certainly a discussion to be had with city staff about what occurs between the property line of our building and the back of the sidewalk there.
I guess, I guess what I was getting, I guess what I was getting at is if that sidewalk ends up going all the way to the property line, as most of those sidewalks do down there, although state may be slightly different, that would inherently, Kim, feel like that patio is all the way out on the property line, and people could be standing at that patio, and they'd be leaning over the sidewalk.
Yeah, I'm just reacting to what I'm seeing.
Right, that was why I'm not sure if that's accurate and what will be reflected when it's built.
Well, we're approving something today, so the drawings in front of us are what we're approving, unless somebody tells me different. So I just want to state that, my opinion on that.
And Kim, you may know more on this, your experience on that, you know, but once in from, you know, the, I'm not arguing against the stairs, but I, you know, the city has always had issues of putting stairs in right of way, and with what TJ brings up of that being right on the property line, taking additional stairs from where the current wall is, so it gets them to the little patio, might be a difficult thing to achieve without shifting the building.
Yeah, I wasn't advocating for that. That was TJ's suggestion. I'd be fine if it was just sidewalk right up to the wall of the building.
Well, we can certainly show that on our site plan. I don't think that's an issue to show, you know, basically all plaza between the stairs within the city right of way. We can work through city engineering with that.
Dr. Boss, did you have a comment?
So I was just noticing that the idea of making the corner of McDowell a sort of gathering place could lead to loitering that might not be quite what's envisioned. Cigarette butts, for example, empty pop cans, drink cups, et cetera.
I think that's what Carrick was getting at with his comment about the ownership, having to make a decision.
That's just, that's a management issue. A property owner would be out there picking up and cleaning up that stuff, I would assume, on a daily basis, if that's what happens. But we want people in East Franklinton, right?
So this is Belkus. I'm just going to quickly interrupt. So what I'm hearing is everyone seems to agree that the update to the windows and materiality and shifting the main entrance to near the corner is a welcomed and supported update, but that, you know, the board's generally asking the applicant to explore how, you know, the corner could interact more closer to the sidewalk, maybe not a condition, but just to continue to explore that. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. Carrick, has it gone through a pre-site compliance plan at all, or have you had a pre-meeting for that?
We have not had a preliminary site compliance plan meeting.
I guess my, I think my only concern would be, I'm happy to approve these changes, but my only concern would be if the site compliance meeting and your site plan changes this corner at all, that maybe Belkus could do a staff approval, or maybe that this corner could just come in front of us for a final approval before building permit?
Yeah, so this is Belkus again. So typically, if changes are made after site compliance, I always review that before approving it. But if the change is different than, you know, the spirit of what the board approved, then I would recommend that I go back in front of the board again. So if it's a huge change, then of course the board will see it again. But if it's like little tweaks or doing something to further accommodate ADA or something like that, but it's still in the spirit of what we're seeing here, then I would just staff approve that.
And Belkus, again, I think if we just say that we're recommending that there be no landscape between the back of curb and the face of building on that corner from stair to stair access to the building, no matter, doesn't that get to, whether it's a city requirement or the developer's requirement?
Yeah, and that's a specific enough condition of approval that that would be completely fine, and I can review for that when they send me permit drawings, if that's something that the board wants to do, definitely, yeah.
I'm not sure that it has to come back to the board. That's just my opinion. If that's the outcome, then I'd be happy with you approving the outcome.
I agree. So what we're looking at right now is a, I'd be looking for a motion to approve with the condition that the landscaping, that there be no landscaping in front of the building on the corner of McDowell and State. Is that what we're looking at?
And would be paved with the same material as the side.
And then be paved with the same material as the sidewalk. Okay, is that pretty much what we're looking at here?
Stated perfectly, Bill.
Okay, I hereby make that as a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay.
Mr. Way, second.
Sorry, who was, who motioned?
I did.
Oh, okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. I'll call the roll. Dr. Boss?
Approve.
Okay, Mr. Fergus?
Approve.
Mr. Manfred?
Approve.
Mr. Semanski?
Approve.
Okay, and Mr. Way?
Approve.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Moving on. Application EF 1908 003. Address is 448 454 West Town Street and 441 443 West Chapel Street. Property owner is Harper Enterprises, Inc. Applicant is Ryan Keener with Mode Architects, and we are reviewing beer garden change of use and site plan. Belkus, staff report, please.
Yes, so the land-grant beer garden is located at 448 to 454 West Town Street and 443 West Chapel Street within the Arts and Innovation Sub-District. A site plan for the beer garden, which is 10,550 square feet and live entertainment venue use, was approved with conditions in June and August of 2019. Today, the applicant is requesting regular approval of their existing site conditions as shown in the provided application materials. So Jaclyn, if you bring up their drawings, please. No, the next one, yeah. The next.
Well, you guys are really going up here.
Okay, so if you start on page one, Jaclyn, or page two, sorry. Yeah, so this is the site as it is today. So you'll see that there's some fencing on the outside or the perimeter of the site. Next page. You'll also see here there's seating on the interior of the site. There's some what looks to be AstroTurf with lawn games, and then, next page. And then you'll also see some string lighting on the site. So that's, if you drove over there today, that's what you would see and what you would interact with. And after staff review, the proposal is generally consistent with the recommendations of the East Franklinton period community district plan, and staff highlights that the parking reduction is significant. But due to the proposed site plan, including less intense programming such as lawn games, staff is not opposed to the parking reduction. staff is not opposed to the parking reduction and staff recommends approval. And if approved, um, the board will grant the following modifications to the East Franklinton District Development Standards. And that's to reduce the number of required parking spaces from two hundred and fifty-four to zero um, for the beer garden. Thank you.
Okay, uh, any questions for staff? Which I want to make one clarification here before we get going. Uh, if I, and and correct me if I'm wrong, Belkis, but if we grant this application, we will be taking a temporary a temporary approval for what currently exists and turn it into a permanent approval for what currently exists. Is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, just so we're clear on that. Uh, now, any other questions for staff?
Bill, can I, I just want to make a point that um, Bart Overly has sent a note that he's on the call now.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, Bart?
I am here, yes.
So noted for the record.
And I just want to add as well, um, so some options for for this application today. The board can approve it, um, but if any concerns arise with, you know, the elements of the site of the current site plan or the materiality of what's on the site, um, just as a reminder, the board always has the option to approve the site plan with specific conditions or to table the application, um, if they feel that, you know, uh, more overarching um, updates need to be made to the site by which they could just come back um, with an updated plan. So just to kind of clarify that a little bit further.
Okay, thank you.
And Belkis, this may be more of a question for Adam or for the applicant, but there's a change in the agenda and last month we had talked about maybe a two-step process of approving what's there, but then coming back for a revised plan, y- y- you know, understanding what the long-term plan is would would help understand why we're, or how or what we're approving.
Yeah, I can definitely speak to that. Um, so what we discussed internally um, as staff is it's actually atypical for an applicant to bring two applications for the same thing, for the same site in the same month, because what happens is um, technically the board could approve both items. And then at that point, um, the applicant can do either or. Um, so if you have, you know, two signs for the same building and the both of, the board approves both signs for both addresses, they can pick which sign they would prefer and and just go about it, go about that one. Um, so just because something's approved doesn't mean that it'll actually be built. And so because of that, we wanted to avoid any con- confusion of thinking that one application relied on the other. And we just asked the applicant if they, um, we requested that the applicant select um, one application that they would like action to be taken on and just focus on that. And then again, if the board has any concerns with what's on the site today being approved, you know, indefinitely, um, then the the application can be tabled. They can make overarching updates and then that can come back for review and a potential approval. Um, or the board can layer specific conditions such as to approve it, but they need X type of fencing or X type of gravel, just as an example. Um, but really, it's it's our practice um, to just have one application per site on each agenda, which is why you saw that other item um, go away, so.
So does that mean they could co- they could come next month with the plan that was, I'll call it upgraded from this, with the larger amphitheater, the larger screen, the more upgraded, and that just gives them more time to come do that? Or or is that off the table from what you understand? Just trying to understand is, are we looking at this?
Oh, no, no. All, all of it's on the table, but if the board isn't comfortable with what's in front of them today being approved indefinitely, then the board could either table this application so they could come back with an application that addresses any concerns. Um, or specific conditions can be applied to an approval today. Um, but, you know, we all saw like a conceptual idea of what um, Land Grant has in mind last month. So if the board wanted to explore what that idea could look like, then this application could be tabled. Um, and they could come next month with, you know, maybe something more reminiscent of what we saw last month. So that type of plan could be focused on and voted on and explored. Um, but right now, what we have in front of us is the applicant requesting to approve what is existing, which is right, which is in front of you indefinitely, or what is like, you know, a regular approval.
So, and let's make one thing, one other thing clear here. Uh, their, their current um, temporary approval is good until May of next year, correct? So
Correct, yeah.
So we're not, we're not under any particular time pressure with respect to their current approval expiring.
Exactly. So again, if 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 the board was concerned with approving this indefinitely, um, then again, it it's not like they have to go out there tomorrow and take out what's there. It's good until May of next year, so there's time for something like this, if there was concern, um, to be tabled and then to have them come back with something, you know, maybe more robust, if that's what the board's looking for. I don't, I haven't, you know, I don't know, but you all can comment to that. But I'm just giving out scenarios and options.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
Um, yes, I had one. This is TJ. Um, I, I think where I thought we were at last month and where at least I'm at personally is I think we, I currently don't have any problem with the usage being approved for indefinite. My concern is that the, the quality and level of installations were done and approved based on temporary, from a cost-saving standpoint and for not breaking the bank with build, the temporary build-out, which we were all on board with. And I think where we're skirting around the issue is putting the cart before the horse. And we don't want to approve currently what is sitting in front of us indefinitely without the approval or at least agreeance of the updating and improvement for the future. So is there a possibility of us granting the usage indefinitely with a combination of saying that the structures and build-out will have to be updated by May of twenty twenty-one?
Um,
Is that a po- like, is?
I'm gonna chime in on that one. Uh, because if we get to the, if we, we, as Belkis said at the beginning, we could approve this with conditions, but given that we have until May of next year, if we're, if the conditions are so extensive as to require basically like really extensive changes to the site, which I think is what you're envisioning, TJ, uh, then we're probably better off uh, tabling this application and asking the applicant to come back with a unified application for permanent approval of, of certain site improvements that they propose to make in a, in a site plan presented to us. All right, in other words, we would permanently approve something concrete that is in fact permanent in our eyes. So, you know, if that's, if that's where the board wants to go, that's probably the right way to do that. Now, having said that, I think we're all talking and not giving the uh, not giving the applicant a fair shot here. Um, so uh, we're veering out of, veering out of questions for staffing to comment. So let me uh, let me allow the uh, the applicant to uh, to have the floor here and we can talk to the applicant about this. So uh, let's see. My applicant's up here. Uh, Mr. Keener, is there anyone else besides Ryan Keener here?
Yes, Adam, Adam is here as well.
Okay, very good. Uh, gentlemen, uh, I'm going to swear you in now. Uh, do you swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge and belief?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, and Ryan?
Uh, yes, to Ryan as well, yes.
Yes, Adam, yes, to Ryan. I think we said it at the same time.
Yeah.
Good deal, all right. Thank you, gentlemen. I think you've heard what we've had to say so far. So uh, with that, the floor is yours.
Sure, so uh, our intention is to still come back uh, for the future improvements. Uh, because we were limited to to one application uh, at this, um, in this meeting. Uh, and because of the last time that we spoke, uh, there was, uh, the board had a kind of um, consensus that uh, they would approve the exist- the uh, a permanent approval for the existing conditions. So that's what we're asking for, uh, for here. Uh, our intention is to come back um, for a larger uh, site improvement. Um, but there are some things that we need to uh, that we felt that we needed to work out. Uh, we were, we had a, we had applied for that only as a um, as a conceptual review, uh, so not necessarily to go to a vote. Um, there are some things that we need to uh, to work through, such as uh, the site and zoning um, before we come back, before we get the actual vote.
Yeah, and I think, um, is Adam to chime in on that, that again, as as Ryan said, our our feedback at the end of last meeting was split this into two applications and and we would approve uh, the current conditions as is and then come back with the more details, because there was a lot of questions on the finishes and um, and some of the other things. And, you know, as I mentioned even last meeting, um, there were also a lot of concerns about the stage and the use of that, and I think that's something that we would even want to explore a lot deeper in the conceptual application we initially are, had sent for this meeting, uh, didn't even include the stage. And because I think I even mentioned, we don't even know when and if we'd ever allowed to have uh, large events that would warrant putting a permanent stage at this point. So um, that I think goes into, you know, if we were to get that approved, I, we would be concerned about, does it even make sense to build something like that if you can't have uh, large-scale events anymore? Uh, so that's where we felt that, you know, on the timing and the feedback we had from the board last week or last month, um, to approach this. Um, again, as I, um, we talked as, kind of the feedback and some of the things we talked about last month was, this is, you know, as we look at this significant investment, this is a kind of chicken and the eggs scenario of um, it's difficult for us to commit to a large investment if we do not have the approval. And it's difficult for uh, the, us to come to a long, that, you know, we have a long-term agreement on the table, but until I know that the, at at the minimum, um, the current use is, is able to continue. To to come to an agreement with the, the landowner also puts us in a precarious position. So, um, I think a lot of it was just based on the feedback we had last week, or I'm sorry, last month, um, approaching it with the existing conditions.
Okay.
Um, this is Belkis, if I could just talk to a couple points really quick. Um, so in terms of the land use, um, with with the use of um, of oh, with live entertainment venue, that use is allowed by code. So there's never going to be um, an issue with the use of the site. That's something that's always allowed. Um, and in terms of the approval, the approval um, is, you know, for the current conditions is is guaranteed through May of next year. So if if, you know, the applicants are interested in coming back um, next month even um, with a more robust plan as as they stated and kind of as we uh, saw a little bit last month, um, you know, those things are in place. And so if this were to be, you know, tabled because of concerns over the materials that are there right now, that's something that could happen, um, and they could come back next month with their full, you know, robust site plan with with um, you know, those upgraded materials and things like that that we kind of saw last month. Um, yeah.
Okay, uh, let me ask, let me, let me ask the uh, the board, uh, right now, the applicant is asking for uh, permanent uh, approval of what currently exists. Uh, would the, is the board interested in granting approval uh, of what currently exists conceptually, but with uh, with the condition that they return uh, to the board for approval of 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 permanent uh, you know, of of permanent materials in all aspects of the uh, of the improvement? I I don't, I I, this does seem to be, to me, it seems to be sweeping enough that we would have a hard time even, like, the approval we would give would be fairly, would be fairly empty, uh, because it would require so much for them to return. But uh, I'll leave it up to the rest of the board to comment on.
Well, I think, I think the the approval would be for the indefinite usage and not the ma- not the materials in the plan that has been previously approved. I think, uh, and I, I would have, I would have no problem approving the indefinite usage as, as it has been approved on a temporary basis and extending that indefinitely. Um, and I think that would give, Adam, would that give you enough, you know, solidarity to move forward with your lease agreements and your planning? With the understanding that you'll have the usage on those parcels as you currently have them indefinitely?
Before you answer that, I want to ask Belkis, um, what a, and and an approval of strictly the current use, um, is that something that we can even do?
You can approve the use. Um, the parking would just be tied to that. So you would approve the use with the development standard modification of two, what is it, two hundred and, two hundred and sixty-four space reduction.
Okay.
So we could do that today, or another option is the board could approve the use and parking reduction on the condition that the applicant return to the board for review of site plan, landscaping and materials. That way, the applicant knows a hundred percent that the use is approved indefinitely. It's just they need to come back to have, you know, to dot the i's and cross the t's of the site. So those are the two options.
All right, and and, yeah, the latter one sounds rather inviting, in my opinion. Uh,
This is Bart.
It's very, that one, it's it's a little bit more clear as to
Yeah.
you know, what the roadmap is, I would say.
Yeah, I agree. Uh, board?
Does the, if they don't follow through, does that make the approval void then? After May of twenty twenty-one?
Oh, well, so what's currently there expires in May of twenty twenty-one, so I I mean.
So if we approve it with a condition and they, for some reason, don't come back to upgrade to permanent status and permanent site plan before the end of May twenty twenty-one, would their, would their approval expire?
I'd say almost certainly yes. I mean, you, it's, it's a conditional approval. Therefore, they don't meet the conditions, they don't get the approval.
Right.
So, so basically, it's a conditional approval until May of twenty twenty-one, when they're, right? Okay.
I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna maybe shoot myself in the foot here, but if we just, I mean, that sounds kind of, if we, there's no Yeah. That, there's no guarantee that the board would ever approve whatever we propose, right? So it seems like a
No, but that is a, but that is a, that is a, an approval to us being okay with you, your usage being indefinite.
Right.
So that, I think, that should allow you to have comfort in negotiating a long-term lease or purchase. So that, I think, that should allow you to have comfort in negotiating a long-term lease or purchase, um.
So, so I guess my question is, I'm putting my honorary jurist doctorate hat on here, um, the, so if there is a condition that we come back, is there a condition that the review board has to accept our proposal? And that puts us in a very precarious posi- position if what we, even if we proposed what we proposed last week and the board all of a sudden says, "Well, actually, we, we disagree with everything that we originally, you know, approved, you know, felt like, you know, the materialities, the lighting, or if there's gonna be some, you know, situations that, you know, the board feels we should have next, but we can't financially do that, or it doesn't make sense for, for the space." Are, does this just go on indefinitely? Are we creating a situation where this goes on indefinitely that we just have to keep on coming back to the board to keep this approval alive when, and we're wasting?
I'll put on, I'll put on my real JD hat from over here.
Yeah, so there we go. Yeah.
And, and say, "Yeah, okay. I mean, we can, we can, grant the use approval without, and making it conditional upon, uh, you know, upon some approving a, a more permanent arrangement." Um, and yes, we, we, you and I, or you and the board could never, we could, we could in theory never agree on what that, on, on what those materials would look like. And in twen, in May of twenty twenty-one, you'd be on luck. Okay? Absolutely true. Uh, I think.
Well, but I think.
I think you have to take it as an article of faith that the, uh, uh, you know, based upon your previous discussions with us, uh, that the, that, that the board is not interested in, um, in, in messing with your business, uh, and, and that there's, and that there's reasonable people on the board. But, you know, if I were your attorney, I'd say, "Yeah, of course there's a risk."
I think the general palette of materials that exists as a temporary use are great as a temporary use. I don't think anyone's asking for granite and marble in a permanent use. I mean, it can still be wood. It's gonna be something that stands up a little better over time. I think the, the use I wholeheartedly support, and I, I don't think materially we're asking for gigantic upgrades over temporary, but it, it would be really difficult for me to support in the current condition of a temporary use space, supporting that indefinitely forever, you know? Some of that, some of that material is gonna break down in three years. It's, it's not gonna look good, so.
Yeah, I, I would, I would also a, agree to that for us as a business to continue that way. It's not in our best interest, but it's also not in my best interest as a business to then enter into additional long-term agreements with, there's no guarantee, and I don't know what, you know, the, the current board supports that, but does that current board exist? It may. I don't know the terms. This is what I, if the, if it's approved. Yeah, okay, sorry.
Gentlemen, okay. So having stated your case, okay, as an attorney, I'm now gonna stake the board's case. If we grant you a, uh, a, you, a permanent use permit without conditions, okay, we would be relying upon your good faith to come back to us and with, with upgrades, whereas you could simply, uh, continue with the, uh, with the conditions that are on the premises now permanently, if we grant that sort of condition. And as a board, I don't think we can, I don't think anyone's inclined to, uh, you know, to do that. I think the best we're going to get to here is a middle ground where we, we put in the record that, yes, we grant you this use. Nobody wants to see you not have this use, but we, but in order to afford to that, uh, grant to be permanent, you've got to come back to us, uh, with, with, uh, you know, with proper, with, with a proper site plan and materials. Uh, board, I, you know, I'm gonna leave, I'm gonna look up to you guys again.
I'd like to comment.
Go ahead, Judy.
I think we need to pay attention to the fact we live in a capitalist economy where if a business doesn't take care of their property, they go out of business and then someone else will be here with a different implication. This, this seems more difficult than what's going on in Congress right now.
Anyone else?
One, Bill, well, I, and I don't know if this is possible, not on board's appetite for this, um, but, you know, one of the things that I heard Adam say, and even Ryan say, you know, part of the, the questioning is wh- what the post-COVID world looks like and whether there's a stage, whether there's all of this. And, you know, we can look here today and say that May twenty, May of twenty-one is, you know, a year out. I'm not sure we're gonna know everything by then. Um, you know, is there the possibility to say in its current state and whether we're willing to extend it by a year, that gives a little bit more time to figure out that plan and whether that helps at all to say, "Hey, we're not gonna be under the belt for, you know, or under the gun for May of twenty-one." Um, but, you know, by May of twenty-two, the, the world hopefully is more clear and a clear plan. And we're saying, you know, by then, it gives you more time to work stuff out and come to a conclusion with the board. Um, that, that would be one middle ground that I could think of, and I, but I don't know everyone else's feeling, or that's a possibility.
Okay, Belkis.
I'd like to speak to that, Brian. This is Belkis. Our division no longer does temporary approvals, which would include extending this for one more year. We, we don't do that anymore. Um, it's just not a best practice. So that's not something that's on the table.
That's a quick answer.
When you say you don't do that, does that mean that, that, that it is no longer a, uh,
Isaac.
legal option? Or is it just something you discourage?
It's something that we discourage and don't support, and that's just because it's not something that's easily trackable. And if something is approved tempor, like on a temporary basis, once something's built, it's very hard or almost impossible to undo it, right? So that's, that's why we don't advocate for it or, or suggest it. Um, I don't know what the legalities are, to be honest, but I know that as, as a division, it's not something that we support or encourage.
The new applications, I would understand that, Belkis, but what about an existing application, an, an existing approval? Just because I, I really like Ryan's middle ground of giving Land Grant a little more time. I have full confidence that Ryan Keener and Mode can do something super, that, but they need some time.
I, I'm, and, and Belkis, I know we've talked about this, um, but, yeah, I, I, in, in, these are very unusual circumstances. We have an existing temporary use, which heaven knows we did it, you know, for whatever reason, with three years ago, we did it. Um, it's there, uh, it exists. If this were any other time other than, uh, other than COVID nineteen, uh, I, I would completely support the city's position. Uh, however, I do understand the unique uncertainty that we have right now, uh, where, where the applicant, uh, is looking at their business and having no darn idea what it's gonna look like in, in the next year until this, uh, you know, and, and, until the, uh, until the crisis passes. Uh, so, you know, unless it's illegal for us to extend this by a year, uh, I, I think we may want to consider it as a possibility.
Yeah, it, I, I don't think it's illegal at all. No, I'm just saying that that's where our division stands and that, you know, if our administrator, Mark Dravilis, was, was leading in my spot, he would, he would say the same thing. Um, but again, you know, as a board, you all can make that call and that's, that's your call to make, but I'm gonna stay planted with what our division, um, requests.
Understood, understood.
Yeah.
Discussion. Um, first of all, applicant, would that, would that be helpful to you, applicant?
Uh, I, I think it'd be, it could be helpful. I think that was one of our, uh, also our concerns if, if, if we had an approval and needed to start the clock on construction. Um, I, I think as, as I've stated through last time, and I think every time we've come aboard, that, uh, you know, we want to continue to reinvest and it doesn't make sense for us. I mean, we took what was an empty lot with a dilapidated fence and sure, our temporary stuff isn't the greatest, but, um, you know, we're, we're, we're doing our best to try to take, uh, uh, and, and, and continue to reinvest into Franklinton. So, um, if it's, if, if that's, if that's what it, it takes to continue to show that we're going to continue to act in, in, in good faith and do so, um, our bit, my biggest concern is, you know, we can say that it's May, but, um, we had this application originally in, uh, for the March meeting that got canceled and it's now, uh, almost July. So, um, that temporary approval keeps creeping up and who knows what's gonna happen. And, um, you know, without this right now, uh, Land Grant Brewing probably would not exist in Franklinton anymore. So, uh, it is something that we, again, want to stay here and, and continue to, to reinvest i- in the community. Um, but what concerns me is, um, you know, what, what we've done and, you know, when we started out, we, we put in the parking lot. I don't think anyone else, uh, besides the larger, uh, uh, Castor put in a garage. None of the other smaller, uh, businesses that came in here did any of that. And now we're faced with a large parking, um, you know, that increased over two hundred spots because of, uh, not owning this piece, this parcel, um, puts us in a real difficult position to see if we can continue, continue with this as part of our business. So, uh, with this coming up and what's now what, um, ten months, um, seems like a lot of time, but that's, that, that, that's gonna be here before we know it. And that really concerns me because, uh, you know, as we're preparing for twenty twenty-one and beyond, I need to know if this is a, a viable option for the future or not. Uh, you know, I, it's, it's not like Ryan and, and Mode Architects are just gonna flip a switch and have an entire design that can be approved in the next month or so that, that has all the materialities that folks are looking for, um, because it's something that is not gonna be a temporary thing that a few of us put together over, uh, over a two-month time period in building if we're looking to be here, um, for the long haul. So it's kind of a, again, I know it's a difficult, uh, position, uh, but that's, that, that is the reality, uh, of why we, uh, came when we did. And, you know, we used the feedback from the board. I mean, the feedback last week or last month was if we separated it out, the board would fully support a, a long-term approval and then we, and then we would come back. So if that has to be the way that, that we look at it, that's fine. Um, we, uh, again, didn't wanna put the cart before the horse and, and do a full design on materialities and what this could look like without actually knowing if we were, um, going to have that long-term approval. So we're, we're just trying to follow the direction that we were given.
And this is Ryan. I, I guess the way I look at it is that what we're, what we're approving in this would be the use going forward in whether that use means making some materiality changes to what's there so that it is permanent and there's a less, lesser investment, but there's upgrades that are made to the current plan, or whether the upgrade is a whole new site plan similar to what we saw last month. And that's what my idea of bringing the extra year would allow you to decide which one of those paths you wanna go down. Because I think where we sit today, no one on the board is willing to say, "We're willing to leave it as it is right now in perpetuity." And so we need to have some teeth to come back to says if we're, if we're approving this, we want some changes made. It may not look at all what was like last month. It may mean, I don't know, ten thousand dollars of upgrades to certain items and say, "Yep, that's good enough. You don't need the stage. You don't need all this." But, you know, and if that's something that in my mind, if you wanted to bring that back next month and said, "Hey, here's our upgrades that we would do to make this in perpetuity." I would be open to that, too. I was just trying to provide an option that you, you didn't have to make any decisions today, next month, or the following month. You had some more time.
You know, I, I.
Look, Belkis, again, I, I do wanna, I do wanna point out that again, there's ten months between now and May of next year. And, you know, some of you might, some of you saw what they presented last month. Some of you, you know, got a sneak peek of the conceptual plan that was posted before the agenda was updated. So there, I, I do feel like Land Grant has genuine, you know, plans in place and ideas of what types of materials they wanted to use. And if, if this were approved with a condition today, it, it could be as simple as approving it on the condition that the fencing be cedar and the gravel be a crushed limestone. It could be something as simple as that. So that way they don't even make crazy, um, you know, really think, they have time to think about what programming they want to do, but there's still some, some detail on how to upgrade their site for the next ten years or indefinitely. Um, but that's just one avenue that could avoid adding on another temporary approval.
Somebody really doesn't want a temporary approval here.
I'm gonna stand my ground.
This is, this is, this is TJ. If, if, Adam, if an extension of the current temporary works for you, I, I would much prefer that and that option than approving something ha- half complete and just saying, you know, "Upgrade the fence to cedar and crush limestone." Because I, I don't think anyone on the board doesn't trust you guys to, from a business standpoint, from a capitalist standpoint, Judy. Yes, you're gonna do what's best for your clients and, and your, your, your company. But you also have shown you're a part of Columbus and you've always done right by Columbus and Franklinton and the amount of investment you've put into a two- or three-year temporary, uh, beer garden is substantial, even though it is what it is currently. It's, you've put in quite a bit of money to it. Um, I don't think there's anybody that doubts what your long-term goals will be. If, if giving you an extra year in May twenty twenty-two, although Belkis doesn't wanna do it, I'm, I think, I think the board is on board with extending that, and that gives you a full twenty-two months to figure out what you wanna do. And if you wanna come to us once in five months and say, "Here's my semi-permanent upgrades," and then we'd like to, to, to come back again in a year and talk about a stage and some other things, I, I think we are willing to work with you on that. I, I don't wanna hamper your long-term lease agreements and your, and your future planning by, by just tabling this, but I also strongly agree with the rest of the board members that where it is currently, I mean, I think Bill said it perfectly. And we, we are not okay with just approving this in perpetuity as is.
Okay, so I, I think, I think you've probably stated a consensus position at this point. Uh, so what I would say is that we would wanna do a two-pronged motion here, which would be to actually, um, approve this, approve the application as submitted with the condition that the applicant, uh, return with, uh, a, uh, a, well, let's see, uh, permit.
Can I, can I interrupt, Phil?
Go ahead.
The, the way I'm, the way I'm reading it is that the board would approve the application on the condition that the approval be limited to May of twenty twenty-two and that the ground cover would remain, um, crushed gravel and astroturf. And that's just, you know, since it's temporary. Um, I think that would be my recommended or suggested motion. Um, so that way you have the time limit in there and then you also address the temporality of the ground cover.
But Belkis, if they cha, if they wanted to change that in the interim from what it is now, they, they'd have to come back to us. That's true. By, 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 by specifically stating those things, if they change, then they'd have to come back. By, 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 by specifically stating those things, if they change, then they'd have to come back. Upgrades, is that right?
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to be clear.
Okay, well, first of all, applicant has stated, does that help you?
Uh, yeah, I, I think, I think so. I mean, it's, um...
You obviously have the sense of the board that, that all of us want to see this use continue. Okay, and I don't think that's going to change. Uh, I think you also get a sense from the board that nobody wants to run you out of business by wanting, uh, wanting marble. You know, marble, teakwood and whatnot being used there.
And this video's on YouTube, so it'll live in infamy and everyone will know what we said, so.
So be it.
Yeah, I, I guess, and this is kind of going back to, I think, what maybe you proposed, Bill, is that, is it, is it the approval that we come back and kind of marrying what Ryan said, taking, taking the current conditions and, and making, and, and presenting a more permanent, finishes on the current, on the current conditions as opposed to, um, you know, because if that's the concern of why, again, we wouldn't have the, the permanency because, you know, the treated, treated pine on the exterior doesn't appear or the larger gravel is seen, is the issue, I guess. My cons- that, that's kind of my concern is, uh, it's kind of where Ryan was saying. If, if this is a, um, if it was more permanent, you know, or the fence that we talked about last year, if, if it is taking what, what is there and, and, and making it more permanent as opposed to, um, because that, that again, I, I hear what you all are saying, but I don't know what that necessarily, uh, necessarily means. Is that if, if it's helpful to say it's, it's approved and we come back and say everything that's existing or what, and, and what does that mean? Does it, are the benches made out of, if, if we kept the benches that are made out of, uh, treated pine that isn't exposed to the exterior, is that an issue versus the, the fence that is along town street? Or if it's painted? Um, so those are, I, I don't, it, it's so ambiguous. I think we would need guidance on that and, and maybe I'm looking too much.
I, I'm, I'm. You're reading too much into it and I would say you create a site plan that you want permanently for the future.
Yeah.
And we'll probably nitpick the shit out of it and you'll come back the second time and we'll approve it. Uh, that, that is the kind of the MO for, for most, for most items and, and things that if we feel strongly, if Kim feels strongly about something, he'll stand up and argue for it. But ultimately it's yours, it, it's assuming to be your site plan for the, for future. Create the site plan that you want for the permanent future and, and will, you know, a- address those, those, those items at that point. Um, I don't think, I don't, I don't think you want to spend money to upgrade what is currently there just to appease us for the future if that's not what your long-term site plan goals are.
TJ, I was just going to say the same thing. Absolutely.
I appreciate that.
I'm, I'm, I'm uncomfortable with that. I thought we were headed in a good direction. I thought you, the plan that you presented, the conceptual plan was headed in the right direction. There was a few things that we gave you comments on, but I, I'm sensing now that you're backing off of that plan.
No, no, I'm, I'm backing off of having to start that, uh, in, in, in six months or, or, or however that is, and that makes me, that makes me very nervous right now when we're faced with potentially closures again this fall.
So Belkus, Belkus, when we approve a plan, how long does the applicant have to implement that plan?
Um, yeah, so how it works is when I issue a certificate of approval after they submit their construction drawings to me, that certificate of approval is good for one year. And so within that one-year period, they have to go in and get their permit. Um, but once they get a permit, you know, they have it and I think the permit is good for a year after that.
Correct.
But once they have the permit, they don't have to build it. It just means that they're allowed to.
Right, so if, I, I would much rather you come back with, with that plan with, and, and adopting some of the comments that we gave you and, and approve a plan like that that seems to be going, going in the right direction in terms of our plan.
But I guess my question for Belkus, but in that scenario, doesn't the temporary approval still expire in May of 21? And there has to be, they would have to shut down in May of 21, right?
But we're talking about doing this over the next couple of meetings, right? That's where TJ was going. You come in.
Saying even with, even with that approved, th- they, I, I, and I'm not, you, you, Belkus, you no more, is that you, you say we approve that in October. I'm just making up a month. They, then come May of 2020, they can't continue to operate under that temporary approval without having building permit or done anything like that from a lease.
But we're giving the long-term approval with the, uh, adoption of that plan, right? An extra year, right?
So let's say, I, I think I know where Ryan's going with this, Kim. So let's say that we, let's say they come back a, a month from now, uh, or even say three months from now, and we approve a, we approve a permanent plan that they're not ready to build until, say, July of next year. Uh, they would have a real problem between May and July because our, because their temporary approval would exist now.
But they, but they wouldn't because we've approved it full-time and they've got a COA for the new items, whether they've started construction or not. It's still, it would still usable and still be approved. It would just, they would not have started to, to.
I, because I'm not sure it works that way because then you would just get a temper- you'd get approval and you could buy out those two years and never do anything on your current site there. So I'm not, I, and maybe that's a question for Belkus.
Yeah.
So let's, so let's give them another year on the temporary until May of 2022 and not beat this course too much longer.
I like the way.
Yeah, I, I, my impression is, is that we want to give them, uh, we want to give them another year of temporary and ask them to, ask them to return, uh...
At their pleasure.
At their pleasure for permanent, for permanent approval, realizing that the next time they come back, they need to actually be ready to build this thing by May of 2022.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah, I, I get, I see that too, yeah.
Adam, how does that sound?
No, that, 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 that makes 100%. You'll probably see us next month anyway, but. Shut down. I, I, I. I didn't think everything was going to shut down in March, but it did. So this is, this is the reality that.
Right.
That I.
We'll take the time pressure off, but yeah, the, the sooner you come back, the better it's going to be.
You'll probably see us the next, next three or four months in a row, so.
Look forward to it.
So, so Bill, correct me, correct me if there's anything wrong here, but I, I propose to, uh, approve the submittal as noted, the, uh, adjustment of the parking spaces for a permanent basis and extend the temporary, uh, use and site plan for an additional year until May of 2022, um, at which time they will need to come back in, in front of the board to, to review and approve a, a final and permanent site plan.
No, make it simpler than that.
So could I?
I think all we're doing right now is we, we are, we are, we are extending the, we're, 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 uh, going to make a motion to extend the, uh, the temporary con- uh, certificate of appropriateness for the, for the existing, uh, existing use, uh, from May of 2021 to May of 2022. And we've already kind of.
Second that. Everyone, okay, so am I hearing that the board is approving the application on the condition that the approval be limited to May of 2022?
Yeah, I suppose there's a different way of putting it. It does the same thing.
Okay. And so, um, so TJ motioned and, um, Judy seconded?
I think Bill motioned, didn't he?
No, I don't care.
Okay, okay. All right, so, uh, Dr. Box. Okay, uh, Mr. Fergus?
Approve.
Mr. Manfred?
Approve.
Mr. Overly?
Approve.
All right, Mr. Semansky?
Approve.
And Mr. Way?
Approve.
All right, thank you.
And Belkus, I promise not to do this to you again.
Thanks, everyone.
You're fine, you're fine.
We'll see you next month.
Thanks, guys.
Cheers.
Take care. All right, let's move on here. New business, application for certificate of approval. Application EF2006001, address is 669 Sullivan Avenue. Property owner is Verizon Wireless. The applicant is SMJ International, uh, OBO, Verizon Wireless. Uh, to be reviewed is antenna and wireless equipment addition. Belkus, staff report, please.
Yes, um, so 669 Sullivan Avenue is located in the Dodge Park Sub District and is the location of an existing monocle tower which houses wireless equipment for Verizon Wireless. The applicant is requesting the removal of old equipment and the addition of new 5G equipment. So Jaclyn, if you could bring up that photo that I sent. Okay, so this is, uh, the site and you'll see the, the pole there, so that's how it looks today. And then if you could go to their drawing, Jaclyn, to page two. Awesome, okay. So this is showing the tower elevation on the left-hand side. And then on the right-hand side, you'll see the existing and final tower plan. Um, and then if you go to page three, Jaclyn, and then page three shows the mounting details on the top. Um, so after review, uh, the proposal is generally consistent with the recommendations of the East Franklinton Creative Community District Plan. And although the plan recommends that wireless facilities be placed underground, staff recognizes that the proposal addresses an existing antenna pole and that the pole is appropriate within the context of the location, so staff recommends approval. Thank you.
Okay, um, any questions for staff? If not, um, we have a representation of the applicant here.
Hi, Aaron Edelman from SMJ International on behalf of Verizon Wireless.
Okay, uh, Aaron, you're the only one, only one speaking?
Yes.
Okay, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is true and accurate to the best of your knowledge and belief?
I do.
All right, floor is yours.
Um, I think Belkus covered it pretty, pretty much. Uh, the purpose of this upgrade is just to continue the 5G overlay in the city of Columbus. Yeah, that's, that pretty much covers it.
Okay, I, I ga- I gather that it would be tricky to put, to put 5G wireless equipment underground.
Yeah, that, that would be difficult.
Or if not impossible, uh, yeah. Uh, full, full, full disclosure, I worked as an attorney temporarily with Nextel long ago and far away and they taught me how these things work. And I think they got to be above ground is one of the, one of the key things here.
Yeah.
So, uh, any questions for the applicant? If there are no questions, uh, before anybody makes a motion, uh, I want to note that if we do approve the, uh, uh, I want to note for the record, the location of this tower, that it is an existing tower, um, and that it is in a, uh, in a location that's most suitable for this type of equipment close to the freeway and, and, or close to both freeways really, uh, and, and kind of away from the neighborhood per se, uh, which, which would be ground, which would be grounds for granting the, uh, uh, what, what is at variance from our standards. So with that, uh, do I, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve as submitted.
Seconded, TJ.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, I'll call, call roll, please.
Okay, Dr. Box?
Approve.
All right, uh, Mr. Fergus?
Approve.
All right, Mr. Manfred?
Approve.
All right, Mr. Overly?
Approve.
Mr. Semansky?
Approve.
And Mr. Way?
Approve.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we have no temporary staff, temporary approvals for staff. I have nothing to read into the record today, strangely enough. So, uh, our next meeting is Wednesday, July 22nd, 3 o'clock, VFEX. And that we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Belkus, I'll talk to you, we'll, we'll get off here.
Shannon says hi, Bill.
Hi, Shannon. You're up there, are you, Kim?
Yep, just got off the river right before this meeting.
I hope you guys had a good, had, had, had a, a good trip down to Mahoning and didn't run into any of the bodies that are hanging at the bottom there.
I'm not going to comment on that, Bill.
All right, take it easy. Bye-bye.
Yep, all right, bye.